Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the January 17, 2017, the first Planning Commission meeting of the year. Commissioner Bell, will you lead us in the pledge?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Turley, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Chairman Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Jackal is absent. Commissioner Rosler.
Here.
Commissioner Looney. Student Commissioner Felix Agueda.
Here.
And Student Commissioner Jonah Cranford.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, before you are the meeting minutes from the December 6, 2016, meeting. Are there any changes? If not, can we see a motion, please, or hear a motion? Commissioner Rosler, followed by Commissioner Carroll.
Move for approval of the minutes as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Please let the record show that the minutes passed unanimously with Commissioner Jackal absent. Mr. Rosler, are there any agenda changes for this evening?
There's no agenda changes tonight.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any declarations or disclosures? Commissioner Bell?
Thank you. Just to note in the minutes for item number one, since I wasn't on the commission at the early design review process in 2016 for this item, I had a teleconference this morning with the representatives from Delphi's Corner LLC, asked a few questions and got some background on what the process had been to date in preparation for tonight's meeting. And the second item, for item number two, my law firm in the past has represented clients who were adverse to KB Homes Coastal LLC. I don't have a problem continuing with this. I never had any individual action against KB Homes, but I wanted them to know it. It was probably eight years ago, and it had nothing to do with Vista or this project or anything with even condominiums. But if they have any issues, I'm happy to address them or talk about them or recuse myself if needed. But I just wanted the minutes to reflect that.
Thank you. Let's see. I have one speaker slip in front of me for Ursula Slack to, excuse me, Ursula Sack to speak on items that are not on this evening's agenda. Please come forward, Ms. Sack, and give your name and address.
My name is Ursula Sack, and I live at 2392 Vista Grande Terrace. I represent Kwahomi Alliance for Responsible Development, also known as Guard, which seeks to protect the semi-oral quality of life in the area bordering Vista to the north. I'd like to make some comments on the Vista Grande Drive annexation that you approved last month. Your approval was based on an incomplete MND that did not consider the traffic gridlock on East Vista Way. I've talked to you about the gridlock on a few occasions, and each time, at least one of you said that you understand how bad the situation is, and you expressed your sympathy to those of us who reside in the area. But it's time to stop with the sympathy and start with the problem solving. The city has known about this terrible gridlock for years and years and has done absolutely nothing. It's time to stop ignoring this problem. It's time for the city and county to get together and provide the infrastructure needed. This gridlock is not just an inconvenient and frustrating situation for the commuters. There's a very real economic, social, and environmental cost to all of us when traffic is this bad. Just ask the folks up at north in Los Angeles. Please take a look at the map of East Vista Way. The city's proposed developments are indicated. There are eight housing projects that add up to almost 700 new housing units, and these families will add thousands of car trips to East Vista Way daily. And there will be increased traffic generated by the retail developments as well. And I apologize, there's an error. The Delphi's Corner, the old number of 137 is in there. I have a corrected copy here for the record of 124 homes. So the cumulative impact of all these projects must be considered when you consider each individual one. None of these projects should be approved until the road infrastructure is in place to support them. There is one more piece of data that I would like to share with you, which comes from the Vista Fire Protection District Board regarding emergency response times. Vistans are lucky to have such an excellent fire department with an average response time of five minutes. However, at rush hour, emergency response times have sometimes been almost eight minutes in the gridlock area. For medical emergencies, the magic number is six minutes. If it takes longer than that to reach them, some people cannot be saved. The Fire Protection Board told Guard members that getting to the Gopher Canyon area is a big concern. They told us that, so far, no one has died. Are people going to have to start dying before the city of Vista does something to resolve the East Vista Way gridlock? Are people going to have to start dying before you stop putting more cars on the road? And again, I have the slides of the traffic, what it looks like from Taylor Street and then on up toward Gopher Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sack. The first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing item, P-16-0180, Enclave at Delphi's Corner, SLF Delphi's Corner LLC. Mr. Rosler, will you lead us through?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is the Enclave at Delphi's Corner. The application number is P-16-0180. That application includes a specific plan amendment, a site development plan, a condominium housing permit, as well as a tentative subdivision map. The 16.1 acre site is located on the southeast corner of East Vista Way and Foothill Drive. The site is three legal parcels, and it's currently vacant land. The surrounding land uses include a commercial shopping center, as well as a school to the north, single-family homes to the east and to the south, as well as a commercial shopping center to the west across East Vista Way. Here's a view of the site looking east from East Vista Way. Here's a view of the site looking southeast from Foothill Drive. The general plan land use designation for the site is medium-density residential, which allows for a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre. The site is also located within the East Vista Way-Foothill Drive opportunity area within the general plan. The zoning of the property is vineyard-specific plan. The applications before you tonight include a specific plan amendment, which would redo the document, the vineyard-specific plan, rewrite the document, and retitle that document, the Enclave at Delphi's Corner Specific Plan. The Enclave at Delphi's Corner Specific Plan includes specific development standards for this site. Those development standards include permitted uses, open space requirements, setbacks, as well as off-street parking requirements. The project before you tonight includes development of 124 townhomes on 16.1 acres. That equates to 7.7 dwelling units per acre. The project also includes open space amenities, parking lot improvements, as well as other site improvements. Access to the site would be provided by a private driveway located along Foothill Drive. Open space amenities would include a pool, restroom building, seating areas, fire pit, shade structures, totlot, seating benches, as well as an open turf area. The proposed project includes 24 two-story townhome buildings, ranging from three to nine townho, or, excuse me, three to seven townhomes per building. Access to the site would be provided by a three-way signalized driveway along Foothill Drive located at the northeast corner of the site, as well as a secondary emergency access point located along East Vista Way at the southwest corner of the site. The Enclave at Delphi Corner Specific Plan requires three parking spaces for three-bedroom units. Based on that calculation, the site is required to maintain 372 parking spaces. The site plan before you tonight includes 372 parking spaces. Staff does note that the parking requirements for the Enclave Delphi's Corner Specific Plan is consistent with the citywide multifamily residential parking standards. In terms of setbacks, the site will maintain a 64.7-foot setback to the east adjacent to an existing residential neighborhood, 57.8 feet to the south, again, adjacent to a single-family neighborhood, as well as 69.6 feet along East Vista Way, as well as 60.6 feet along Foothill Drive. The regrading of the site would require a series of retaining walls located along the south, north, and west property lines. Those retaining walls would range in height from 1 to 10 feet. In terms of recreation amenities, the site would maintain a centralized pool area, which would include a pool, seating area, fire pit, gazebos, as well as a restroom building. Other site amenities includes a totlot area, as well as a walking trail. In regards to pedestrian access, the site would be providing a four-foot-wide sidewalk that would link all aspects of the project. The landscape plan indicates that a total of 15% of the site would be dedicated to landscape material, which is consistent with the city's landscape ordinance, which requires 15%. The landscape plan indicates the use of native and non-native plant material. The condominiums would be three bedrooms, two and a half baths, ranging from 1,489 square feet to 1,840 square feet. Each condominium would maintain a two-car garage, as well as 160 cubic feet of storage The townhomes would be two stories, a maximum height of 27'2". The exterior of the condominiums have been designed around a Mediterranean architectural style. The exterior of the condominium buildings would be enhanced with earth-toned stucco exteriors, exposed roof rafters, corbels, finials, accent tiles, window banding, as well as window shutters. The buildings have been designed with hip and gable-style roofs. When completed, the condominium buildings would maintain four distinctive earth-tone color schemes. And examples of those color schemes are behind you tonight. The general plan land use designation of medium-density residential would allow for a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre. The proposed project has been designed to maintain a 7.7 dwelling use per acre density. In regards to the Enclave at Delphi Corner Specific Plan development standards, the proposed project has been designed to meet all applicable development standards, including building height, parking, open space, as well as landscaping. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project. That mitigated negative declaration was circulated from December 9 to December 28. Mitigation measures identified within that document related to biological resources, architectural, or, excuse me, cultural resources, hazard and hazardous materials, noise, as well as traffic. Four comment letters were received and are included within your packet tonight. Staff has provided responses to all four letters, and those responses have been based upon environmental analysis. This project went before the Planning Commission during an early design review back in February 16 of 2016. Since that time, the developer has been working diligently to try to resolve the concerns that were brought up during that early design review meeting. Those concerns included pedestrian connections. The site has been modified in order to provide a four-foot-wide walkway connecting the entire project. A pedestrian access point at the emergency drive located along East Vista Way, and the site plan has been modified to include a pedestrian gate at that emergency driveway. A lack of amenities for children. The site plan has been modified to include a new 11,990-square-foot totlot area, which includes playground equipment, seating benches, shade structures, as well as open turf area. And finally, enhancements to the entry driveway. The site plan has been reconfigured and modified in order to enhance that driveway by providing concrete paving, an architectural theme, project sign, decorative pilasters, an optional ornamental vehicular access gate, as well as a landscape turnaround island. With that, staff is recommending the Planning Commission atop the attached resolutions, recommending city council approval of a mitigated negative declaration, a specific plan amendment, a site development plan, a condominium housing permit, as well as a tentative subdivision map for the construction of 124 townhomes on the subject site. That concludes staff's report. The developer is here to provide the Planning Commission with the brief presentation, and at the conclusion of that presentation, staff, as well as the developers, are here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosler. James O'Malley, please. Good evening. State your name, give your address.
Good evening. James O'Malley, representing Shopoff Realty and ownership and ombudsman of this property. Happy New Year. It's never easy to follow up a detailed presentation as staff has prepared over the many months on this project, but I wanted to talk about really one theme for this property, and that's how it's matured and basically seasoned over time, a long time. Ironically, I was on the phone today with the original owner of this property, David DiRienzo, and that was what was approved in 2007. Ten years goes by, and a lot of things change, particularly on this property, and it's actually a subject matter that I had a conversation today with Jacob Bell, where work-live or an example like this really, really wouldn't have worked on this property. So in a way, it's kind of a godsend, or a good omen, or good luck, or however you want to phrase it, that this didn't happen. So speed up the clock, travel through time on a terrible recession, depression in our particular market, and where do you end up with? Well, we came back to the city with a concept for apartments. Honestly, it wasn't that well-received. So we listened, and that was an image of it right there. Three-story apartments at this location, approximately 200 of them, in the summer of 2015. So we listened to good input. We listened to good input from staff, and we listened to good input from our marketing intelligence. Went back to the drawing board and developed a concept like this, 140 market rate for-sale condominiums. The issue with this is it required a three-story component to it. Got more marketing intelligence, costs have gone up, different changes with demographics. We didn't really think it would work. So another stroke of luck, where we didn't move forward on this, and we reapplied. So to staff's credit, from February of 2016, where this was presented, and honestly, was well-received as far as architecture and the theme and the density and the components of this project, we came back in May of 2016 with a different concept and a different plan of what's in front of you tonight. The biggest difference is what we feel is a product, two stories, larger in size, lower in density, that would conform to the site and the situation as best as we can make it happen for the citizens of this city and for this particular property and how it would conform. A lot of good amenities came out of this. There's an image of the architecture from the previous design, and where we are tonight, and some of the components that we listened to. No apartments, market rate, ownership, stay within the density, don't amend the rules and the plans of the city, don't skip on parking, primarily two-car garages and guest parking, exceed the open space requirements, and improve the frontage of the property. We feel this plan does all of that, as Michael has determined in representative staff report. If you look closely along the edges, we didn't adjust the buildings where the facade would take up the image or the street scene, where instead it's the edges of the property. It's loosened up with density. It has two great components for open space. And again, it's all two-story. In addition, we raised the property because one of the concerns physically was the amount of earthwork that would have to be moved or removed from the property. So we're down to a minimum of about 7,000 cubic yards, which, in the world of engineering and grading operations, and we have our civil engineer here, is pretty much what we consider a balanced site. You're never exactly sure where you are in this amount of detail and design done today, but we feel that this is a balanced site that could, would affect the travel movement and all the impacts of that facility on your streets in Vista. Another good component of the property is the amount of landscaping. Just the nature of the property, it's on a hillside, per se. If you look closely, we have our landscape architect here to describe any component of it you wish, to talk about how it'll really be screened. The city does have, you know, compelling or strict landscape design requirements, and we're adhering to them, and we're proud that this property will address that street scene. Truly, if you go through all the planning and all the exercise of design and engineering and landscape architecture, and the physics and utilities, and all the requirements of an application that we have to address in our business, what really matters is what it'll look like and what it'll appear like, and how the feel of this project will provide for people to travel by it, much less live within it. We think it adheres to both those requirements. Here's the architecture. Many meetings and time and professionals spent pursuing the right architecture, which we feel would work best with this buyer, this demographic, this home for future ownership, and create value in something the city and everybody within this room would be very proud of. Another image there. And then as Michael described, the color board and the materials, we think it's important to show this, not to bore you with materials and color boards, but when you get this kind of a variety, it really does create a very eclectic community and street scene, meaning each building will have its own material and color and trim and those kind of treatments, which really provides a mix and a variety of building types and gives you that feel of the opposite of monotony, if I could use any other different word to describe it. These are renderings that were provided to the city for, you know, with a professional, where they actually lay the design into a CAD system and then address the landscaping. Yeah, is it in the future, maybe a five- or, you know, seven-year growth pattern, but we want to give a good idea of what this would look like in the future and how it resemble and respect the property. Another version of it. Do the buildings get completely hidden? No. Do we want them completely hidden? No. But I think it's a great match with landscaping, setbacks, contoured grading, and the type of architecture and the feel and the earth tones that have been provided and worked well with city staff and us as the applicant. So in conclusion, a lot of work, a lot of history from 10 years ago, what was in front of the city, to today's application in front of you, and something we're very proud of, and we look forward to the citizens' support and your support and questions and advice to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll, do you have questions, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I've been looking, I haven't found it yet, but can you tell us some more information about the retaining walls, plantable retaining walls or non-plantable materials, that type of thing? Mostly, I'm concerned-
I can tell you how expensive they are, but maybe Michael can tell you about the exact design of them.
Our city code, as well as conditions of approval within this entitlement before you tonight, include a requirement that anything above five feet would be required to be a plantable wall.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rosler?
I found in the specific plan where you are going to watch those plantable walls to make sure things take off, excuse me, I had a cold the past week, and so I'm not quite recovered, but my voice is hanging in there right now. In the past, in the plantable walls, things would get so compact that plants wouldn't grow, and I saw in the specific plan that you're going to watch that and make sure that those walls get covered, and I wanted to thank you for that. Also, in the MND, I found where it covers blasting of the site, and there was a notification, the blaster is required to take care of notification. Does that notification go to the surrounding property owners? And how many, I know you can't tell right now until the overburden's taken off, but how many days do you think you might be blasting? Any clue on that?
Let me answer the notification part. We'll notify as the bigger radius as you wish, whatever staff or the city would suggest as far, you know, 100 feet, 200 feet, 500 feet. The worst thing the city would need is, you know, a bunch of phone calls ringing up and asking what's going on. As far as the amount of blasting necessary and how many days, I could get that answer from a grading operator. I can tell you with serious accuracy that the amount has been tremendously reduced, and how we did that was by raising the site. We were allowed to do that and not impact our neighbors by reducing the height of the units. Previously, a three-story unit, obviously, you know, 10 or 12 more feet. Well, that gave us that ability to raise the site and balance it, so less grading, number one, and less blasting was necessary. As far as the amount of days, and that's what it would be, would be days in the operation, I'd be guessing, to be honest with you, but we can get you that answer if I could have a grading contractor look at the plan, because we haven't gone to that extent, you know, we're only at the tentative map level tonight, so we haven't gone into working drawings if we're successful. But the city, as far as approval, will enter that stage.
My concern was the adjacent neighbors and that they'd be noticed that there was blasting. Do you think that, the sound study indicated that they probably wouldn't hear it, but do you think that there would be vibrations that they'll hear, feel, would be like an earthquake, or is it even a small amount?
No, I've actually witnessed it in the community I live in, in the previous developer I worked for, we did blasting, and it's almost like a thump. It's all underground, and what it does is it breaks rock up. We aren't blasting with it, it's, you know, look out, you know, so it just, it basically crumbles the rock below grade, and then it lets the operators be able to move it quicker.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Are there any risks associated with the blasting?
No, I don't think there's any safety risks. I don't think there's anything that would hurt utilities or any improvements that are in place or scare anybody. It's just part of a process to be able to grade the property with efficiencies and more ease.
Most often times, they will use, they will drill the boulders, and then they put an expansive material in there, and it pops the granite. It doesn't explode. They will use dynamite on remote sites, but typically, in this particular area, they will drill to core, and then they put an expansive material in, and it just pops. You're going to get a lot more vibration from the D8s and D9s that are moving dirt than you will from this.
Okay. Well, I've seen the video of Santa La Jo Hills being blasted, blasting out of their hillsides, and that's quite significant. You're at your entrance, you have a pedestrian walkway that zigzags down the hillside to the entrance. I suppose that's for handicap access.
Mr. Rucci.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
My concern is that the school district thinks that there's going to be 30 kids going to Oak Foothill Elementary, and I bet you they're not going to walk down the zigzag hillside, they're going to walk down the- hillside, they're going to walk down the street. And my desire, I think, is to have sidewalks on both sides of your entrance. Would that be possible?
So I'm just making sure we don't already have it.
No, they're not there.
We'd ask for a four-foot sidewalk, so it doesn't look grossly out of scale.
Okay. All right. Those were my two for you. I've got a couple more for staff, but I'll let the other commissioners ask their questions first.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
Yes, I read your report, and by the way, we appreciate what you've done in kind of summarizing, you know, in the report. My question for you would be related to the farmhouse and the vineyard. It was the first vineyard in the area. So if you could kind of expand on how you've incorporated that in the design, those two things, the farmhouse, I mean, you gave us a picture of the farmhouse alongside the design of the buildings, and they look very similar, but if you could expand on that, you know, you said part of the farmhouse is still there. Will that be destroyed?
Yes.
So how have you recognized that historical significance?
We haven't.
Not in the design of the entrance or any way, just?
No. There isn't a theme of historical prevalence or theory or intent in the application.
Okay, thank you. We'll talk about that more.
Commissioner Looney, please.
Just one question. It was brought up in the presentation by staff that there's optional driveway gates. Are they going to be installed later? Or is there, I mean, they will provide additional security for the residents with the gate there? Is that, again, I'm just trying to get an idea of optional, are they going to be in or are they going to be out, or do they know yet?
You have to help me with that question, I apologize.
As we approached onto the property, we got the entrance. And the entrance to the main drive, it's indicated that we have optional driveway gates. That's what was presented in staff.
That's correct. That's what's identified on the drawings.
So they just don't know if they're going to put them in yet or not, is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, based on my conversation with the applicant, they haven't confirmed if they wanted to put them in or not. You know, it's an interesting situation. Sometimes it gives a false sense of security too as well. So I think at this point, they were going to wait until after the entitlement and confirm that through the construction drawings, but they have not made a determination at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rosser?
Michael, at one of the early design reviews, we talked about extending improvements down Foothill to Oak. We were told that that was under discussion. Did that go anywhere or?
I think as part of this project, there's going to be a signalized intersection.
Right.
And that signalized intersection would have crosswalks going across the street that would provide access to the school. So in lieu of providing that sidewalk, the crosswalk provides that pedestrian link.
But then the traffic study requires them to put in a striped right turn lane at Oak.
That's correct.
Has everybody taken a look at that and there's enough room to do that? I drive through that intersection just almost on a daily basis, and I looked and I said, nah, it's not there. So I just, I don't think, there wasn't any mention of off-site improvements that were necessary for the widening of that intersection.
Yeah, at this point, I know that the traffic engineer, as well as the engineering division, has reviewed the off-site improvements and has confirmed them to be acceptable to their standards. So at this point, they have been reviewed by both departments.
All right. One last wild one for you. This is going to have a great street presence, I think, with street trees on both East Vista Way and Foothill. And our city standards require that the sidewalk be adjacent to the curb and then the five-foot parkway where the street trees will be. Any chance of getting those reversed so that the parkway is adjacent to the curb and the sidewalk is separated from the curb? Provides a better pedestrian environment.
Which pulls the pedestrian off the street a bit.
Right. Yeah, I walk and I've run down East Vista Way and it can get hairy sometimes with the speed of the traffic.
Well, that's something we could discuss with the engineering division, but I think there's standard for that street, John. Correct me if I'm wrong, Shus.
I'm sorry, that is an option for us that we can look at. The standard is that you have the sidewalk adjacent to the curb comparable to what you see further down East Vista Way. We did have some concerns about pushing the sidewalk in because if it's adjacent to a slope, there's a potential for the slope to continue to slough onto the sidewalk. So, but we'll look and see if we have room. That's a possibility.
Okay.
If you want to include that in a-
As a condition?
Condition, something we can review.
Okay, super. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Malley, all of the units are three bedrooms, is that correct?
Minimum, yes.
That's correct.
Okay, so no twos, no fours, all threes. Okay. All right. Got it. Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Garretson?
Never mind, he pretty much asked that question. Thank you.
So we'll take some questions and comments from our residents.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ursula Sack, please.
There seems to be a troubling pattern here. The city of Vista appears to be making land use decisions based on incomplete information, particularly in regard to traffic. This is another incomplete mitigated negative declaration, and it should not be approved. The traffic study only looks at intersections at the project or just south of it. Traffic to the west and north is not considered. So once again, the rush hour traffic gridlock on East Vista Way is ignored, even though this project is only about a half a mile from the area where the gridlock backup begins. This is unacceptable. A complete environmental impact report, which would include a comprehensive traffic study, is necessary for a project of this size and potential impact. Again, please look at the map. The cumulative impact of all those proposed developments must be considered. It must be done through a comprehensive EIR study of this project. It's time to stop ignoring the traffic gridlock problem. It's time to make land use decisions based on complete and honest traffic studies. And it's time for the city and county to get together and provide the infrastructure needed before more development projects are approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tom Fleming, please.
Good evening. My name's Tom Fleming. I'm a resident on Grapevine Road here in Vista. First off, I'd like to thank the commission, the staff, and the developer. The work that's been done over the last 10 years or better has been amazing. When we first looked at this, it was not a very good project, I don't think. But now I believe we've gotten to something that we can deal with. There's a few things, points of interest that I would like to bring up. First off, the multifamily parking standards, I like that very much that they're there. I would like a few more, but they are within standards. I like the idea of a two-entry into a project, and this one only has the one with the second as an emergency entry. I wouldn't mind seeing something along as a second entrance there to mitigate the goings and coming of the residents. It's a perfect example, as I said, of working together. The teamwork has been really great. I like the 60-foot setbacks. One thing I would like to see, and this has been talked about at the city council meeting the other night on a project that they were looking at, is adding larger box trees to start with, so that you've got, instead of waiting five or six years to get to something, you already got a start on it. And it shouldn't be that much more to add those trees along Foothill and Vista Way to be the larger box when they're setting in. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fleming. Mr. Rosser? I believe when we reviewed this project last year regarding Mr. Fleming's comment about the second entrance, which would be Vista Way, am I correct in remembering that the slope was too great, that it wouldn't be effective to add a second entrance?
Actually, after that meeting, we did report back to the traffic engineer, and he did confirm the fact that the city engineer would not support an entrance along East Vista Way based on the size of the street and the volumes associated with that street, that it wouldn't be a safe place to put an entryway into this community.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, I have no other speaker slips for this item. Commissioners, any further questions before we start our commission discussions regarding this item? Commissioner Garretson?
Just one question about the moving of the landfill, or the landfill, the soil. 7,000 cubic feet, how many trips would that be to remove that? Speaking of traffic safety in terms of in and out of there, will the traffic light be in before that starts to take place? I just can't imagine doing all that without that traffic light on the street.
I believe the applicant said it was a balanced grade. So that means there's no dirt going off the site and there's no dirt coming on-
They're just moving it around.
Right.
Okay. Actually-
It requires an import of 7,000 cubic yards. So there will be earthmoving, however, importing of 7,000 cubic yards of dirt or material.
If the applicant's civil engineer is here, it might be a good opportunity for them to explain the grading plan.
That would be wonderful.
Hi, I'm Scott Gilbert with Michael Baker International, civil engineer for the project. In terms of the earthwork balance, the 7,000 cubic yards that we're talking about is part of, you know, almost, I think, 100 that we move, 100,000 that we move, so it's a very small percentage of the total site. But that said, you know, this is a very preliminary plan. As we go through the final design, that 7,000, if you spread it out over the whole site, becomes very small. And what we'll try to do is balance that within the final engineering design, which is a much more detailed design than the design that we've done to date. I mean, at the numbers you see now, we do show that, but like I said, as we go through the final engineering and we do all the detail, we have the ability to kind of move that around and spread it around here and there, and I think we wouldn't be able to lose that in final engineering and make a site balance.
Okay. Hold on, don't go anywhere. Commissioner Garretson, please.
Yes. Concerning, you know, there's going to be big equipment going onto that site. Will the light be done before that starts to happen?
I can't speak to that. I would say most likely, no. You wouldn't build a traffic light before you've actually done the grading and built the intersection. You really wouldn't have anywhere, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't have the curb returns and stuff in to be able to install the light. In terms of a construction entrance, you're right, you would have equipment coming in, but it's going to come in on truck, it's going to get dropped off, and then it's going to work on the site and it's going to get picked up. So I mean, you're talking about one trip to bring it and then one trip to take it away versus you're going to have, you know, the operators coming in and out every day, but that's, you know, normal passenger vehicles, not big trucks carrying heavy equipment.
What impact's that going to have on the streets around that? If you have big trucks dropping off equipment, that's going to block traffic. Is there enough space to get it off the traffic or out of the traffic so they can drop it off without interfering with traffic flow?
Yeah, you'd have to bring it onto the site somewhere. I mean, if you, it's, going off memory here to think about how the site is, but I know along Foothill, there's kind of an old road that's graded up there that you could kind of get, you could get them off the road onto the site, even if you had to do something to make an access road to do that, that would be something that would get figured out when a grading operation, when that grader comes in and do this work, you know, that could be a condition that they'd have to, hey, show us how you're going to get traffic off of it. And that's typically something that they do as part of getting their permits, so.
So we could make that part of the approval if we approved it, to make sure that they keep the equipment off the streets as they're coming and going and, you know, when you first start, that would not be a problem.
I don't see that it would be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rosser?
If there is export that's required or import, you'll have traffic control out on Foothill, I would assume.
Yeah, the grading contractor, when they identify that, would have to apply for a permit with the city for traffic control and what have you to move that material.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Nope. Okay, now we'll begin commissioner discussions. The public hearing portion is closed.
Well, I'll start. Someone's got to jump in there. I really appreciate the enhancements that you've made, going from 200 units, 200 apartments, and big, deep cuts. I remember that from probably the 2015 review and what it looked like in 2007. I was on the planning commission at that time. Down to 140, down to 124 condos, it's not rentals, three bedrooms, a lot of amenities. I think the views from up there are going to be beautiful. I like the color schemes, I think that they'll blend well. I think Commissioner's suggestion of, or Mr. Fleming's suggestion, of putting maybe bigger box trees along that parkway would be pretty. It would soften things up while the other, the slope is building. The traffic is, I won't say is what it is, but the traffic is an issue. I know Vista Way down towards Chow and those restaurants is on the, is it the 2020 or it's a CIP thing? But it really is dependent on building that happens so that those developers would pay their portion. Is that correct, Mr. Conley?
You're referring to the buildout of Vista Way?
Mm-hmm.
So we have it in our general plan as a four-lane collector, so it needs to be improved all the way out to the city boundary, which is just past Warmlands. The city boundary ends before Gopher Canyon, so if we improve the street to the city boundary, we still don't cover the county's portion, so there is a link there that the county is responsible for. The council has discussed it, it is a priority for them. A fair amount of the current CIP is going into the Paseo Santa Fe project, and once that's complete, then the council will be looking at where to put money in the future. So there's a likelihood that East Vista Way could be a part of that discussion, it's not currently in our CIP.
Is it in the radar of the county?
Not to my knowledge. The county's doing a small improvement at the intersection of Gopher Canyon and East Vista Way, which they've been working on to do some widening there. It's just limited to the intersection. I'm not aware of any other plans they have to widen East Vista Way.
Okay. All right, so I understand that. Sad as it is, and I see the traffic, and again, sympathetic, and I know you want more. I understand. I understand. Commissioner Garretson, please.
A question on the heating air conditioning units. They're going to be totally hidden, correct?
Um, they would be ground mounted and, yeah, they'd be located in the, uh, areas adjacent to the project.
So, the people above that would not be looking at rooftop air conditioners? I, I just wanted to emphasize that based on my understanding. Thank you.
Commissioner Rassler?
Yeah, the, the first night that this came before the commission, um, I gave them a significant hard time. Um, and the, the improvement, uh, over the last three projects is, is just been, I think, tremendous. I'm still a little concerned about creating one large pad with the, the slopes, but the landscaping plan is pretty significant, I, I thought. Uh, there, there are 24-inch box trees as street trees, uh, on both East Vista Way and, and Foothill, and then they're spread throughout the project. And the other thing I found interesting is that there are view easements for the single-family homes at the top of the hill that are provided for in the, in the specific plan and the landscaping plan, and a requirement for the HOA to maintain them. So, the single-family homes at the top of the hill have their views maintained and don't get blocked when the trees get mature. Um, they, I think they've listened to us about the townhouses. I like the two stories. Uh, there are no dual masters here. They're, uh, all single masters. And as far as the traffic is, is concerned, I looked at the, the traffic study, and it said that there were 33, uh, trips in the PM peak that would be leaving the site. Um, I think this portion of Vista, most everybody is coming home, uh, coming south on, on East Vista Way. It's the folks that are further south in our industrial areas and, and commercial areas that are going north to either Fallbrook or, or Temecula, that are leaving town, that have East Vista Way backed up outside of the city. So, the traffic, the improvements to the intersection that this, this, uh, project will do are sorely needed, and so I'm, I'm, I'm really excited. As a resident of the neighborhood, this is going to be a great improvement in our neighborhood, and, and I'm really, really happy to, to, that they're coming through. So, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Carroll?
No, I don't have any comments.
No comments? Okay. Sorry, I thought you were reaching for your button. Um, want to go ahead?
Let me get rid of my cough drop, I'm sorry. Um, I'm going to move that we recommend to the city council the adoption of the mitigated neck deck, uh, the specific plan amendment, uh, for the enclave at, at Delphi's Corners for the specific plan, and then adoption of the site development plan, condominium housing permit, and tentative map for the 124 townhouse units, with the added condition that sidewalks be provided, four-foot sidewalks be provided on either side of the entrance, connecting up into the pedestrian walkways inside the project, uh, that the city look at switching the parkway and the sidewalk location on East Vista Way and Foothill to see if we can enhance that, and that, um, seemed to me like there was a third one that we, we-
Mature trees.
And mature trees. Well, if you take a look at the landscaping plan, there, there are mature trees. I mean, there are 24-inch box and larger trees. There are 15 gallons. I'm, personally, after looking at the landscaping plan, I'm pretty satisfied with what they've prepared as being better than, than what we normally get, so I'm okay with it. So, that's where I'm at. Uh, that's a motion.
Commissioner Garretson?
I would second and request that we consider a, a couple of more amendments. Uh, one is that the equipment be, uh, taken off the road and use that dirt road, so they're not blocking, uh, you know, the two main arteries. And two, that they incorporate something relating to Delphi's vineyard and the historical significance, at least in the entrances, to where this, it's my understanding, this is the, the first vineyard in the area. And I think it would be historically significant to try to recognize that somehow in the way they designed the entrance or something there.
Those are acceptable to me.
Okay. Um, before we, we vote, I wanted to see if the, either of the student commissioners, if you had any comments or questions that you want us to consider?
Um, I concur with, uh, Mr. Rassler concerning the, uh, the sidewalk issue, especially with a school, uh, near the vicinity. Um, I believe that needs to be addressed. With that said, I believe that Mr. O'Malley's, uh, presentation was very thorough and has been greatly enhanced, um, since the previous, um, uh, times that he's, uh, brought this project forth. And so, um, I believe that, um, if the issue with the sidewalks and the, uh, the issue with the, um, with the, was it with the dirt and the, uh-
Mm-hmm.
-the coming in and the out, um, if we can figure out a solution to, um, how we can prevent too much, um, traffic, then I believe, um, that this project should go forth.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cranford.
I like the presentation a lot, uh, and all of the amendments I approve of, and building on Commissioner Garretson's idea about the representing the old vineyard.
Mm-hmm.
There's land to the west, uh, the bottom part of the map, that doesn't appear to be used. I'm not sure if there's going to be landscaping on that, but, uh, you can perhaps move the barn house there or put something there that represents the old vineyard. Um, I think that would be a good idea.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Um, excuse me, Commissioner Rassler?
Have you had a chance to look at the mitigated neck deck? I, I would, I would direct your attention to that and to the cultural resources section of it. It's really interesting what, uh, what they found there, so, um, look at that. That's why that area's open, so.
Okay. Um, Ms. Shirley, I think we're probably ready, or Mr. Conley? Please let the record show that this project passes unanimously with, um, Commissioner Jackal being absent. Very nice. You want to give yours up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go. You want to? Here's the-
I can't believe that they can't silence those. All right, we had a couple more signatures. How you doing? Signature?
Are you ready? Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is an early design review, and closing the doors. Good. Uh, Mr. Rassler, will you explain to the commissioners as well as to our guests this evening what the process is for the early design review and the purpose?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. Um, in my presentation, I'll give a little thorough explanation of that process and so forth.
Thank you.
Um, this project is Sahara Town Homes. The application's P-16 dash 0444. Um, it's an early design review. The early design review process allows the opportunity for the planning commission to review initial proposals and provide, uh, preliminary comments to the applicant. Um, these proposals have not been vetted through the city, nor have they been routed or thoroughly reviewed by the city staff. During this process, the applicant will, uh, answer questions specifically rated, related to the, uh, the design of the project and the thought process behind the initial proposal. Um, there's no formal vote or action, uh, with this, uh, this item, uh, seeing that it is just an early design review. The, uh, staff has received a preliminary proposal to develop 72 condominium units on 4.58 acres. Um, the site is located at the northwest corner of South Santa Fe Avenue and Marvist Drive. The site is currently vacant land. Here's the site. Again, it's 4.58 acres. Um, it's one legal lot and it's currently, uh, vacant land. Surrounding land uses include, uh, vacant land as well as a retail center to the east across South Santa Fe Avenue, as well as a mortuary building directly to the north. Um, the site is bound by single-family homes to the west, as well as a gasoline service station to the south across Marvist Drive. The site maintains a general plan land use designation of mixed use. The, uh, mixed use land use designation allows for a maximum density of 40 dwelling units per acre. The zoning for the property is mixed use 21, which would allow for a four-story product with a maximum, uh, density of 21 dwelling units per acre. The project, uh, that we have before us tonight would require a site development plan, a condominium housing permit, tentative subdivision map, secret review, as well as a landscape review. The project includes 72 condominium units within 16 separate individual buildings. Uh, the density of this project would be 15.7 dwelling units per acre. Um, the product is a two-story walk-up unit with garages at a maximum height of, uh, 28 feet. Each unit would be a three-bedroom unit. Uh, the project includes development of the 4.5-acre site with 16 buildings, uh, ranging from two to nine condominiums per building. Uh, the mixed-use parking standard requires, uh, 2.25 parking spaces for three-bedroom units. Uh, based on that calculation, the site is required to provide 162 parking spaces. Uh, this preliminary conceptual site plan has indicated a total of 178 parking spaces. Site amenities within this plan include two tot lots, barbecue areas, a dog wash area, green belts, uh, that are located between the buildings. Architecturally, the proposed, uh, buildings reflect a medit, Mediterranean architectural style. The condominiums would be two stories and would maintain hip and gable-style roofs. The exterior elevations of the condominiums would be enhanced with, um, Corville accents, uh, window shutters, um, dimensional molding, as well as grid pattern windows. Each condominium would maintain a sectional garage door that would link to the internal street system within the development. The condominiums themselves would be three bedrooms, ranging in size from 1,666 square feet to 1,709 square feet, and each condominium would maintain a two-car garage. Uh, staff is requesting that the planning commission provide comment to the applicant related to the proposed design of this project. At this time, the developer will, uh, come up, provide the, uh, planning commission with a brief presentation, and we'll be here to answer any questions you might have. That concludes my staff's report.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate being here and you hearing, uh, our proposal for this project. Um, I've worked with some of these faces in the past.
Can you state your name and give your address, please? Thank you.
Sure, of course. Adam Pevney. I reside in San Marcos, California. Um, currently, uh, Director of Land Acquisition and Entitlements at KB Home. So, uh, commissioners, thank you again for your time tonight to present our vision of this proposed project located on South Santa Fe Avenue. Uh, in addition to being director over at KB, I'm also a 20-year resident of North County, San Diego, and a licensed general contractor. Uh, I'd like to highlight some of the key points of this project, and then want to let staff and the audience know that the KB consultant team is here tonight, including our landscape architect, civil engineer, entitlement consultant, property owner, and myself, all available to field any questions you may have about the proposed project. So, we're going to take a look at the site plan in a little bit different light here. So, as mentioned, it's 72 townhomes on this 4.6-acre site. They are all two-story in, in height. Uh, we feel that two stories very desirable in San Diego for first-time buyers and first-time move-up buyers and even, uh, folks downsizing, uh, so they don't have to climb three flights of stairs. One story's preferable, obviously, but we, we're not building on 10,000 square foot lots. We're building on something that has zoning ability for 21 to the acre. So, the amenities that are on here, we do have a, uh, tot lot program for the two and four-year-olds in this region over here. Got some backups here. So, we've got, uh, the two, the two-to-four-year-old tot lot in this area here, uh, the more four-to-12 span, the larger span, uh, tot lots located over here. We have a dog wash area, uh, a lot of, a lot of dog lovers out there today. It's gaining popularity, seems like more and more each decade. Uh, two separate picnic and barbecue areas, one on this boundary over here, the other in this region here. We've got the green belts, uh, in the project throughout a few different areas, and we've got Paseos. got paseos connecting walkways throughout the project itself. And we've got proposed enhanced entry paving in this region right here. The architecture itself, we'll go into a little more detail on that. We're proposing two different types of elevations. The square footage has been modified ever so slightly. We've moved up a little bit. Currently, we're at 1,574 square feet for the small plan type, which is the Plan 1. The Plan 2 is actually 1,654 square feet. Plan 3 is 1,759, and those are always plotted on the ends of the buildings. We have a variety of footprints, as staff had mentioned earlier, ranging from a duplex up to a nine-plex. Every unit contains three-bedroom standard, two-and-a-half baths, standard outdoor living in the rear of all these homes, and two elevation types, the Italiane and the Spanish style that we saw earlier. So this is the Spanish and then the Italiane. The homes are anticipated to be priced under FHA limits. That's a big deal, as all of us know here in San Diego. Affordability is pretty tough in San Diego, so not everyone can line up to buy a $600,000 or $700,000 home or million-dollar home. A lot of builders are building that type of product. We're catering towards first-time buyer, as mentioned earlier, so these are targeted to be priced in the high $300,000 price range within FHA limits, and they've moved their limits up in 2017. So that's good for folks who are financing and want to put 3.5% down and don't have 20% down on an expensive or more expensive home. Again, we're targeting first-time buyers as an alternative to expensive rentals. The cap rates have been going low. Rents keep going up in San Diego, so it's kind of a dangerous combination for those folks who are trying to live here, especially those fresh out of college. Rents are $2,500 to $3,000 all throughout parts of the county, and it's really not affordable. Homes, actually, with rates where they're at are more affordable with after-tax savings factored in, and you build equity. So we're also targeting move-down buyers who don't want to maintain a large yard and don't want an expensive water bill. So that's the... Some of the other interest in this particular project is going to be from move-down. Just fast forward, the anticipated development and model schedule. We would anticipate grading early first quarter of 2018 with models to start approximately April of 2018, and then models to grand open August of 2018. That concludes the presentation. I've got one other slide here. This is just showing some color schemes and materials that we've proposed for the project. Obviously, we can refine this in more detail as we go further along with the architecture if the staff and the audience and residents want to see something like this. And I kind of leave it up to the Planning Commission and the audience for any questions. I'm here to field questions along with the team, so fire away.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, I have a question for you before we go any further. Would... Is it beneficial to both the applicant, to the city, and to us if, I have a half dozen or so speaker slips, if we get the questions from the public as well and then we can put ours on top of it and do it all at once? Is that okay? Okay. Then I'll turn off your button, Mr. Carroll. All right. And we'll hear from the public first. Ray Snidecker, please.
I'm Ray Snidecker. I live at 270 Mar Vista.
Okay. Speak a little bit louder, we can't hear you.
I live at 270 Mar Vista.
Thank you.
And I'm... Compared to the last proposition of the last builder, this is 1,000 times better. I just want to state. It's a little too much as far as too many units. You had the last gentleman who was up here for the other plan. He had three parking spaces for each unit for three bedrooms. That would mean if this was under the same standards, they're 38 short, so I don't know how the minimum proposal, 160-whatever, comes into play when you requested three for the other place. That'd be my first thing, because the residents in the community are going to take a hit with the parking on the street, and we have a lot of bikers, and we have a lot of people who walk along that walkway, and it's very busy. Also, being on Mar Vista, I don't have to tell you the traffic that we deal with, the damage to the road every day. If I were to take a picture of the trucks that come down our road that it is illegal to, and they do, there is nothing stopping them. You bring construction involved and it gets worse. Those houses that are behind us, over past Avocado, when they were doing all that construction, they were driving right down our road. And if you look on the sides of our road, they're all caving in from everybody's driveway. And mine is, but also, we paid to have ours redone on our own buck. So for us, as a community, we would like something from the city to ensure that you will maintain and upgrade our road, being that it's going to be used more and there's going to be... I don't even think the roundabout was even a good idea, and I love roundabouts, but then how the heck am I going to get out of my driveway? The speed limit there says 25. We have at least, what, four to five accidents every few months from mailbox been taken out, actually run over. Tree kept the guy from hitting the fire hydrant. So, you know, I mean, this is normal for our area. We understand that. As far as the design and all that, it couldn't get more boring. But there's got to be some artistic people in Vista that they can work with or something to have something to say to... It's right on a main street. Put something pretty. Make it lovely. Make it something that doesn't look like every other suburb in this county. Make it interesting so people want to live next to a mortuary and a train, you know? I mean, come on. Do something to make it wishful that, okay, I want to buy my first home here. I have two kids, almost done with college. I would love for them to be able to purchase a first home. I think it's a great idea, but it's too many, not enough parking, and we're going to take a beating for it with the traffic in the street. And I think that's about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christina Gino, please.
Hello. My name's Christina Gino. I live at 262 Mar Vista Drive. I did want to start by saying that I also appreciate that the project is much less dense than the other one that had been proposed. That was really meaning that everybody's listening to those of us who are in the community voicing our opinions, and we appreciate that. I would still be affected by this project as everybody else on the road due to traffic. It is dangerous on Mar Vista, getting in and out, especially at certain times of the day. It's almost impossible. I think that the last traffic study that was done on that string, on the street, it was functioning at a very low rating, and most of us can attest that pretty much the only ones that drive the speed limit on that road are the ones that live there. We have accidents, like Ray was saying, all the time, lots of drunk drivers, taking out mailboxes, fire hydrants, going into people's yards. I'm just really concerned more about how many more people are going to be using that road to access the freeway, and I didn't really agree with the roundabout idea, just because I don't believe it's going to allow any of the residents to be able to get in and out of their homes safely. We already have that problem. The only other issue that I kind of find with this property and others is it's a mixed use. When we bought in 2009, we were excited to buy our first home, but I went into it researching that lot along with some of the others in the area, and as my realtor assured me, it's a commercial property. You're not going to deal with a bunch of homes and a whole bunch of families living there. I know it's been a while since 2009 and things have changed. However, I would really love to see anything that goes in there being much less dense. And I know you guys have got a really difficult job because you have to weigh all of the options and figure out what's best for the city and the community. So I'm hoping that you hear us in our issues with traffic, density, crime, wanting our home values to stay up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is... Mr. Fleming, Tom Fleming, please.
Thank you again, Commissioner. A few points. I am encouraged that the density is down to 15.7 per acre, even though it's way below what is required, but I would love to see it less dense than that. Just the look of it looks very dense, which means I'd like to see some more open space in there, some greenery, something to separate some of those buildings there. As was said, the architecture is very plain, so let's... I'm sure you will be discussing that. I like the colors, though. The roundabout, I'd like to hear you discuss that and try to figure out what you think on that, if it's a good idea or not. I don't know. It was going to be required at one point. So that's the items I'd like to have some discussion on.
Thank you very much. Windus? Thank you. You have to help me with your last name, please.
Hi, my name's Windus Apotion, and I live at 1324 Cypress Drive. Tonight, I was coming back from Carlsbad, work on Mar Vista, and it took me nine minutes to get from the freeway to the corner of Mar Vista and Avocado. Nine minutes. So that's a fail. When I go to work in the morning, same thing, and the traffic is stacked up along the front of Santa Fe there. So I wanted everybody to be aware that that's a fail already at this point without building anything here. There are a couple of things that I would request, that this... There would be no parking allowed on Cypress Drive there because there are bicyclists that come in droves along there. I think that's a real important issue, though I know that the mortuary, at times, there is an overflow and they do park on there. Maybe there could be some consideration to help that out, but as far as on Santa Fe, I don't think that that's a good idea. And also, I would like to see some sort of a median that goes down Santa Fe around this place. I live on Cypress Drive, and we paid to have the K bars put in to close the traffic because we had over 500 cars a day going on our little windy road and crashing a majority of times, hitting... So we paid for it ourselves, and I noticed on the thing, it did not have that. That was part of the last process that went through, that that was supposed to be part of what happened in this lot, was supposed to permanently close that portion of our street. The median would also greatly enhance the fact of the people illegally turning, still cutting through on Cypress the other way to get out. So I'd like to see that be a consideration with the traffic, as far as the traffic going into this. I still would like to see some sort of a second, at least, safety valve to get out on to Mar Vista. All of this, by the way, before occupancy. I don't want to see this like down the line, yeah, 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 yeah. You know, this is a significant amount of people. I'm very happy with the two-story. Like it a lot compared to last time. I do think it is significantly dense. When I see those... The pictures of the condos showed straight on, I would like to see what it actually looks like behind. Don't look like it's like blue sky. It's not. There's a hill there, and there's a train track that goes by there. I think that everybody should have a chance to look at that. Also, in the design, pick one country, Italian, Italy, Spain, you know, one of those. It doesn't have to be all. I think it would be more unified. I think it's an adorable thing that they think a dog wash is an amenity, but it's not. I would like to see fire pits, bocce courts. I would like to see someplace where dad could throw a ball with his child. At the... Across over on Shadow Ridge, there's some old two-up, two-downs apartments, and when it was really hot, there were families sitting out on with blankets and throwing balls and playing catch with their dogs. That doesn't have that, and a dog wash station is a poor substitute, and tot lots, too. It's not... The closest park is a long way away, and that's pretty dense, and you know there's going to be about 100 kids living there, and their parents are probably both working parents. There should be something fun to go do at night. I mean, fire pot pit, bocce, barbecues, pool would be awesome. And I know that that means that the cost would have to go up, but I think that it's something significant. My other concern is, dang, those are on the street. Can we just push them back away from the front of South Santa Fe? I mean, those are right up there in the traffic and the speeding that goes by there. That's a... You know, there's a grade there that people go by on really fast, and I think that that's a really crummy thing to do to the people, that houses are right up against that street with the morning traffic and all of that. So, I mean, clearly, this is too dense that there isn't enough open space for the people to live with quality. So I like the setbacks. I like the fact that there are three bedrooms. I'd like to see definitely box trees in there when it gets down to that point. I don't want this to turn around to look like postal way. It's so close to us that we feel that problem, where the design wasn't properly thought out, and there's no place for those people to go to hang out. And so there, you know, I mean, there's like a little pool, and they're just crammed in there, and I mean, I just think that that's a disservice to do to a fairly upscale area of Vista, that we could come to a conclusion that perhaps the height is good, less density, better design, you know? I mean, I like the fact that this is, you know, a better process than what was happening before, but I still don't think it's enough for that area considering the amount of people that will be here. And I just think whatever they do in Shadow Ridge, I just saw the other ones that you guys helped pass, the Windermere, man, there was places for people to play, to have a community. I mean, that's a whole community right there. I'd like to see it be special for the people that buy there. I mean, it's a great price point to get in on. Let's show them how much we appreciate having nice young families. And also, a little concerned about solar. Are we not doing solar right now, or, you know, I'd like to see maybe solar included in things because I think it is pretty much the wave of the future. Anyway, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Teri Collins, please.
Hello, Planning Commissioners, Teri Collins, 1504 Green Oak Road. I'm actually here today to respectfully request that this item be postponed or continued into your next City... Planning Commissioners' meeting. Mr. Connolly, on the January 10th City Council meeting where he discussed the mixed-use zone loophole and the changes that are needed, he talked about this particular property and said that there wasn't... These aren't your exact words, Mr. Connolly, but he said that there was not a project here planned at this time, that the project that was planned and approved here was stalled or not going to happen. And I actually have the quote, I sent it to the City Council, and the PowerPoint presentation that he showed that night discussed the 96 apartments. It did not show this new proposed project. So unfortunately, the citizens that were here that night were misled because they went home to the quiet of their home thinking that there was not going to be a project built here. And so that's why we don't have very many people here tonight. So again, I respectfully request that this be postponed to your next Planning Commission meeting because of that error. So... But if you don't, I'm going to also give some input. I do completely agree with Windus. This... Because this is a mixed-use property, there's no setbacks, and we know that that just doesn't really provide a sense of community. It's really horrible looking when you drive down the street and you see these units up against the road. It's not a sense of community. Two picnic tables, I think there are there. Not enough. Not enough green space. Instead of a dog wash, we need dog parks. We're building all these mixed-use buildings. We're not building any new parks in Vista, and so people don't have places to take their dogs. So that is something that a lot of... I received a lot of input on that, that people would like dog parks. Quite a lot of the mixed use that's going in, you look at the property on North Santa Fe, just north of East Vista Way. The plans that were shown to us, it was, again, misrepresented that there were these beautiful palm trees going to be there. Never happened. So we really need to always, for every project, let's ask for bigger trees. It doesn't hurt to put that in as part of your conditions. So not enough amenities. I also heard the woman at the January 10th City Council meeting saying, how come Shadow Ridge gets everything? Why doesn't North Vista? And here we go again, a project in North Vista, no pool, no fire pits, two picnic tables and a couple of tot lots. So those are things for every project north of Vista. Let's make sure that we get those things. for every project north of Vista. Let's make sure that we get those things for the residents. This is our quality of life that you're making decisions on, and we really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Again, I respectfully request that this be postponed to your next Planning Commissioners' meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, got questions for either the applicant or staff? And again, this is just an early design review. There will be no position on this project. Commissioner Rossler.
Michael, what is the status of the previously required traffic circle at Mar Vista and Avocado?
Previous application, I did speak to the traffic engineer regarding this improvement, and due to the fact that we haven't prepared, or a traffic study has not been prepared, he couldn't confirm that it would be required to be installed because there is a reduction in the number of trips based on the reduction in the number of units. However, once that's completed, then he'll have a better understanding. He said potentially it could still be a requirement, but unfortunately, without that study.
Is KB aware of that, that previous condition?
I've had a previous discussion with one of the representatives of the applicant, but I'm not sure if they know the extent of that. We can definitely have a discussion about that tomorrow on the phone.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, I have forgotten my early design review format, but I have an old one from the beginning. So comments, if you have one, please, for site design grading and architecture. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So I guess this is a question for the applicant on these buildings adjacent to South Santa Fe. The ones on the south end are, look like the stairs are accessing the public sidewalk there, and the ones on the north end don't. Is there, I'd kind of like to just get your thought process on, on what, what your intent was, if there's a certain reason why some of these would have access in this manner.
That's a good question. We've since modified the site plan. So what you're seeing here is actually the latest and greatest version of the site plan, Commissioner Carroll, and every unit here is actually going to have backyard. So entrance will actually be on these alleys for these units here. So there is no, no home left behind, effectively no home missing a yard. So we had a situation before where we had yards on South Santa Fe, but we were concerned with traffic and things of that nature as well, and accessibility. And we had grade issues as well, so we ended up just giving everybody a backyard. So everyone on that unit along South Santa Fe gets, gets a yard now.
Okay, at what depth?
Minimum Civils here and Landscape Architects here. Are we giving them? Five minimum.
Excuse me?
Five-foot minimum rear yard. Some are, some are larger, but that's where we're at.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all I have on that right now. Thanks.
Okay.
Commissioner Guretson?
I don't know if this is design or what, but having nine buildings back-to-back, as we have here on, on the backside, or on the front side, with just a 10-foot space in between, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, with a 10-foot space in between, I, I think is just totally out of character for that neighborhood. I think it's just, you know, it, it makes what I would refer to as a density jungle as you go up Santa Fe. So...
Please use speaker slips to make your comments.
So that, that's, that's all I have. I, I just can see this. You have all single-family homes behind, commercial property around, and then you have these 10 or 15 buildings next to each other, two stories high, 28 feet. It, it just looks totally out of character for this area.
Okay. I'll duly note it. I need to state for the record that the, the landowner has previously, and currently has, an approved tentative map on this property for 96 apartments, three-story. So that's what's actually currently vested on the property today. So, just for the record, I didn't get to mention that during my presentation, so.
What, what does that mean?
That means this is less intense and has more buffers and setbacks than what's previously approved.
Approved. When was that approved?
Tentative map, I want to say 2013?
The prior, the prior development was approved in 2014, a three-year life on it, which expires in August of this year.
Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, a couple of the items of concern. Again, referring to the, the northern cluster of structures on Santa Fe, we've got 270 feet basically of, of straight wall. There needs to be a greater amount of offset, a greater amount of articulation. The plate heights or the fascia lines on all the exteriors have no variation. So we're looking at 270 feet of basically straight, flat wall. So I think that's something that needs to be reevaluated.
Okay.
A lot of the spaces between the clusters of buildings are at 10 feet, both on the perimeter structures and also on the interior structures. It's, need to get a little bit more breathing room with the number of units that you're proposing. Let's see. Again, concerned about the front setback from Santa Fe. You've got 10 feet. It's close. It's, it's really too close for that street. And then really for staff, some of the site work that was done at the intersection of Mar Vista and Avocado, I don't know what the paving contractor did, but they didn't use much aggregate in the asphalt, and it's warping significantly. So on the hot days, the vehicles come, they're just continuing to push that asphalt further towards the center of that intersection. I think we're a little short on site amenities, especially for this number of units, and also their, their homes. So we need to have some spaces that are going to draw people out of their homes into the outdoors, and I think that could be handled.
That, we've heard a lot of that from the residents, so seems that's a big common theme.
Commissioner Rossler?
So Adam, you're aware that there's a requirement on the existing project to build a roundabout at Mar Vista and Avocado?
Correct. We've, we've seen the signed improvement plans for that, and we bid for that.
That's, that's something that I think would be very beneficial for the neighborhood. Based on my experience, we think, I think traffic will continue to move with the roundabout and will improve the, the residents' projects, or problems in getting out of their homes. Amenities, I would recommend to you that you look at the, the recent projects that this commission has approved. The one prior to yours, the one that was along Buena Vista Creek, I can't remember the name, where the trail, the Buena Vista Creek Trail gets extended through. That had a great amenity package. The ones that the commission, the multifamily projects that the commission has approved recently have had some very good amenities in them, and I think you should look at those as examples. And I'm disappointed that you return the units on Santa Fe. I would much prefer to have the front doors facing Santa Fe. I would ask you for a bit more of a, a front yard setback, maybe enough for a patio out there. If you turn the back of the project to, to South Santa Fe, you're probably going to build a wall, and then we're going to have five feet, and then the, the units, and I, I have a problem with that. So. And then on the parking, I, I missed it when, when Michael was making his presentation. The 162 that are required, are those out of our mixed-use standards?
Yeah, that's correct. It's based on...
Okay. So you're providing, you're providing more, but I still calculated it 2.5 per unit, under 2.5 per unit. And I think you'll find, if you review what this commission has done in the, recently, that we're not satisfied with the mixed-use parking standards, especially if you're outside of a transit area or a walkable community. I see this area as being very auto-oriented, and so you're going to need to provide more parking spaces. So take a look at the, the projects that we've recently approved, and, and I think that'll give you some guidance to, for the number.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So it was touched on this long linear face of the project, but to expand on Commissioner Looney's thoughts there, you know, the fourplex unit elevation is not terrible, and, but then, but what we don't see in those elevations is, is these seven units. And so my preference would be to see these, you, you have some two units and some three units and some fours throughout the site. My preference would be to see those along the frontage, and then the more dense seven units together and such towards the back, and to provide that space and provide that opportunity for additional landscaping in between those smaller groups of units. So I think there could be a little juggling around there that could open that up a little bit.
That's good comments.
Commissioner Bell?
Thank you. I'll echo my colleague's comments. I agree with most of what's been said so far. I just want to acknowledge and say, I know you guys are in a difficult position trying to build something here that is acceptable to the community and is financially feasible, and tries to hit that lower target market that you're looking for. So we appreciate you trying for that. I think that's an important thing for our community. I, I hope you can get there with some more amenities and some restructuring here. I, I think this was probably a rather quickly assembled plan, I'm guessing. How long have you guys been working on this one?
We've been working on this deal for about five months, so.
Okay, but, but this exact layout, or?
This exact layout is probably the 10th site plan.
Okay. Well, acknowledge that you're in a difficult position trying to use this small little lot, especially with a train and a mortuary and everything else, and, and an established neighborhood right behind you that is larger, single-family homes with yards. But I, I think right now the tendency is to shy away from mixed-use that doesn't actually have any mixed-use and, you know, I'm, it's tongue-in-cheek, but AMPM doesn't count. I mean, it's not enough to say that there's a service station across the street there. So do your best to make it more of a community, try to fit something else in there, and then we'll do our best to work with you to try to get something that we can, you guys can actually profit from and do good business with.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the comments.
Commissioner Looney?
Just one additional comment. As you look at the design, the first train comes through at 4:20 in the morning.
That needs to be on the disclosure.
And usually, that's the westbound train. The eastbound train usually goes through about 4:24, 4:25. And then there's a Tuesday evening train that comes around 10:30. So if you're going to put, it might be worth your while to look at additional insulation and maybe some triple-glazed windows.
Windows, right. Sound mitigation along that.
So, yeah.
It gets along this boundary here.
So that's just, that's what exists on a daily basis.
Okay, no, that's great info. Thank you.
My question comments would be on the entrance. I'm assuming that it's too close to Mar Vista for a signal. So is it right in, right out? If there's a left, pardon me, if there's a left turn out, is there going to be a, a pocket?
It looks like there's a pocket. Maybe if I can bring the civil engineer up here, if you recall. I think it's, I mean, it's definitely right in, right out capability, but it looks like there's, there's an opening to get out with a left as well. So there is...
It's a pocket, okay.
There is a pocket, it looks like, a median right there showing.
Okay.
That allows for left out as well.
And I think that's all the comments that I had. Commissioners, any other comments? I'm sorry?
Just on the design grading and architecture, or on anything?
Parking, traffic, landscape, and amenities. We'll hit those four together.
Yes. Amenities, I would echo a lot of what's already been said about amenities. You know, you do have the rail trail coming through there. I don't know when that's supposed to be completed through that area. John, could you enlighten me?
The portion of the rail trail up to Mar Vista Drive is under construction. The portion adjacent to this site is still, it's been designed but not awarded. Sandag is still seeking funding to complete this portion up to Civic Center and through to Vista Village.
But the rail trail would go to Mar Vista?
The one that's, yes, the piece that goes to Mar Vista is under construction right now.
So that, that would help a lot with your, your amenities by having access to that. But however, it would give you easier access to the school, but the schools are basically, their amenities aren't accessible, you know, during school hours or even after-school hours. The city's working on that, but as of now, you're basically on your own here. You, there's nothing close by. There's no park. There's no school within safe walking distance. So that's why the amenities are, are so important in that area.
And that bicycle path is on the opposite side of the tracks from this proposed development?
But they would still be able to have access through Mar Vista, not from the...
Once they go down to the intersection of Mar Vista, yes, but they're leaving the property.
Yeah, leave the property to get, to go over to Mar Vista to get to the rail trail.
Commissioner Rossler?
I just wanted to echo Commissioner Bell's comments about the product. I think this is a product that's needed in town. We're happy to see it. It's three bedrooms, it's townhouses, it's for sale. So that's significant for us. We appreciate that, and you're on the right track there. So I just wanted to echo his comments on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So I think, you know, the, the nice thing about this early design review is it hopefully gives you ideas that, on what you could do to change the project so that you might get it approved. And, and this setback from South Santa Fe, I think, is, is troubling for a lot of people. I don't, I don't think it was discussed that much, but my feeling is it's, it's that many of the commissioners would agree with me that it's too close, and with the idea of giving you something specific to shoot for, I'm, I'm going to suggest 20 feet and see, and see what the other commissioners might have to say about it.
I like that idea of increasing that, that setback along Santa Fe because I, it is troubling. And I, I like the idea of putting those, the fourplexes and the smaller buildings in the front, flipping them around. I, I thought that was fabulous idea. And one of the members of the public suggested to make the design not be too, you know, one Mediterranean, one Italian, kind of make it something more uniform, but, you know, sex it up a little bit, you know, make, make it fun. Commissioner Carroll?
Just to follow up on that. So what you're also gaining from getting the buildings, the relief from the street is, is additional landscape opportunities there for, for green, green buffer there.
Excellent. I'm going to pull the civil engineer up here for a second, too, just to chat on the rideaway, because I think we have a pretty wide, wide sidewalk behind the homes there. So the area in brown is, is the yards. And then actually, the width of that sidewalk on South Santa Fe is... Santa Fe is, is that seven feet? So there's additional sidewalk in there that's not showing right now, that's actually next to the property line, so part of the right-of-way. So the street curb is several feet off from the backs of the units. We didn't depict it.
It goes from the curb to the right-of-way. It's about a 10-foot wide sidewalk.
10-foot wide sidewalk there right now before you hit curb. So you actually have a pretty decent setback from street today, but it's not depicted on here. So we'll take a deeper dive on that and look at what we can do with setback from sidewalk, from a 10-foot sidewalk. So maybe have.
Yeah, that is a wide sidewalk there, which, you know, you could talk to the staff about having less sidewalk and more landscaping there in the right-of-way, but then, you know, city would be on the hook for maintaining that.
Maintenance.
But that wouldn't be enough to really satisfy me with the setback from the right-of-way of 20 feet that I would personally like to see.
Okay, understood.
Okay, have no more speaker slips and no more lights are on. So Adam, did you get enough from us and from the public to see what we would like to see?
We did. I want to commend the City of Vista Planning Commission. I want to commend the residents, too. Everyone obviously is very focused on their neighborhood and wants a good community. And we heard loud and clear what everyone wants, our residents plus planning commission. And what's refreshing is a lot of times, when we're doing entitlements and jurisdictions throughout the county, we don't really hear these types of comments until planning commission itself and then city council. So this is really refreshing to see early design review where we can now make the project better, satisfy everyone, and just have a home run, win-win for everyone. So I commend the planning commission for your input and for your time tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rossler, did you get what you needed from us?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So now we've got item number three on our agenda. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Chairman Kramer and Commissioners. This is another early design review. Applicant project proponent is Hassan A. C., and it's a 17 apartment units proposed at 505 North Santa Fe Avenue. File number is P-160440. To quickly reiterate the purpose of the EDR, the EDR provides an opportunity for the planning commission to review the initial proposal, provide preliminary advisory comments to the applicant. The proposal has not been routed or fully reviewed by city staff, reviewed only in terms of basic zoning compliance. Applicant will provide a formal PowerPoint presentation and answer specific questions about the project design and the thought process behind the initial proposal. No formal vote or action is required or necessary for an EDR item. Scope of the project, it's a preliminary proposal for 17 apartment units on a .43-acre site, so just slightly smaller than half an acre. It's located on the northeast corner of North Santa Fe Avenue at Connecticut Avenue. The subject site is currently vacant land. This is an aerial showing the project site, as I mentioned, just under one-half acre with the surrounding uses, and I'll go into a little more detail in the next few slides. Here's a view of the project location, looking basically to the east from Santa Fe Avenue, showing the vacant lot there. That's Connecticut at the south end of the lot, that cross-street. To the north is a car wash and then a gas station. To the south, across Connecticut Avenue, is a small restaurant, and beyond that is a strip center. North Santa Fe Apartments can be seen just over a block away to the south, south of Orange Street. To the east are single-family and duplex residences located within the townsite-specific plan area. This is an alleyway that's behind the project site, and that would be the corner of the vacant property to the left of that upper picture. To the west, across Santa Fe, there's commercial uses, offices, and retail, as shown there. To the west, directly across the street, also is the skate park that's currently under General plan designation for the site is mixed-use, which allows densities up to 40 units per acre maximum. To the east is medium-high-density residential, which would allow 10 to 15 units per acre under the general plan. Southeast, medium-density, up to 10 units per acre, which is the lighter yellow area, shown to the bottom right. Zoning for the project site, like the general plan, is mixed-use, which allows densities up to 40 units per acre. To the east, as I mentioned, townsite-specific plan, which is two-family residential, maximum 12 units per acre. To the southeast is also townsite-specific plan, multifamily residential, 10 units per acre maximum. And to the south is the edge of the downtown Vista-specific plan, which allows up to 40 units per acre along Santa The project would require a site development plan, secret consideration, and landscape review. As I mentioned, 17 apartment units, it would be one building at a density of 40 dwelling units per acre. It's a four-story proposal, 44-foot max height, first-floor parking with three upper floors of living space. 15 of the units would be two-bedroom units at approximately 900 square feet, and two one-bedroom units at approximately 650 square feet. The project site is showing 34 parking spaces and one loading zone. This is a conceptual site plan, showing the ground-level parking. Some of the other information is also shown here that I already mentioned, so I'll move on to the next slides. This is the level of living space above the parking area, which, towards the eastern half of the site, is also a grade level. Site amenities include two common outdoor patio areas. This is a view of the architecture. The applicant's designer is here to speak more about the details of that, but it's been described as a simplified Mediterranean style, and it does include some brick veneer facade treatment. This is an example, floor plans here showing two bedrooms units and a one-bedroom unit in the lower right-hand corner, and that's next to one of the outdoor patio areas. Staff requests the planning commission provide comments to the applicant related to the proposal, the proposed design of the project. And that completes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Does the applicant, are they going to have a presentation at all, or are you just here to answer questions?
They do have a brief presentation as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lena Ramon, and I am one of the designers on this project. And I'm also a Vista resident. I was born and raised in Vista, so this is a great opportunity for me to help out the community. This project is located at 505 North Santa Fe. It's on .42 acres, and the owner has owned this property for about 16 years, and the owner is also a Vista resident for about 30 years. The owner wants to develop the site to contribute to the development and the beautification of Vista. And as you can see from this aerial map right here, that the surrounding parcels of this community are, you know, there's residential, there's mixed-use. So we are proposing a 17-unit apartment building. It's going to be four stories, like Mr. Winter said, 15 two-bedrooms, two one-bedrooms. There's going to be two common area. There's about 34 parking spaces that have been proposed. We are also, this is going to be either, we're proposing apartments, condos/condos. We're still in the initial design phases of that. I have the site plan up here also. It shows the first, there's going to be minimal grading on the site. There is about a nine-foot difference from Santa Fe, North Santa Fe, and the back alley. So we are going to use that site, and that's why we are proposing the parking garages on the lower level. And as the elevation escalates back up towards the alley, that's where we're going to have the entrance to apartments/condos. So you can see there's going to be a minimal grading there. We are providing two common areas, one large one on the first level, and then one patio one on the third level, where we are also proposing a transitional architectural design by using some brick veneer, you know, with the flat roof, and some of the Mediterranean color scheme to integrate into the City of Vista. As you can see, the front facade off of south, I mean, North Santa Fe, we're creating also landscape and by creating vines, so as people will be more walkable with that architectural design shown there. This building will, I believe, contribute greatly in the community, especially with all the development happening about two blocks away and a block away. So it would integrate great. These are also the elevations. You can see the color scheme and the change of grade on the side. These are the materials board. Those are the color schemes with the brick veneer, just sort of texture. We will go with tan windows, you know, modernized patio balcony railings, you know, some lush landscaping on the interior, and, you know, surrounding the building with exterior landscape also. We are also providing, with the loading zone, because these are apartments, we are providing loading zones for moving trucks, or, you know, garbage trucks, anything that needs to be accessible. We are providing accessibility with elevators, also security. The inside's going to be secure also because of the area. That's one of our main things with security in the design. We are providing parking off the alley and then underground, where you access the garage through the alley going down to the garage level. And like I said earlier, this will be a great contribution to the community, especially with all the development around it, especially with the skate park across the street, and the new Santa Fe Apartments about a block away. And that's it for my presentation. And if you guys have any questions?
I think we'll do the same thing that we did before. We'll get comments from the public, and then we'll weigh in after that.
Okay, thank you.
With that said, Tom Fleming, please?
Just real quickly on this, I like the idea of apartments here, actually, instead of condominiums. It's right next to the transit center, so it's going to be transit. I believe this will be something for young families and young adults, single, in that area. So I believe it's a good idea. I like the coloring. I just like the idea. It's not a bad place to have right here. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Terry Collins, please?
Hi, Terry Collins. I know this is a small property, so I think that you've done a great job, and I appreciate that it's a Vista firm doing this and a Vista owner. Again, it's just that setback issue, minimal setbacks or no setback really at all. I don't know what can be done about that. And no real amenities, but hopefully it's not going to be families living here with kids, because there's just not a place to play. So that's my only concerns. I do like the deck on top, but it's really those amenities, again, that we're missing here. And it's, what can they do? That's such a small property. If less units, some more amenities would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no other speaker slips. So Commissioners, questions? Any kind of questions? Commissioner Rossler, and then we'll come back with comments.
Mr. Winters, how far to the transit station? Is this within the quarter-mile walking radius? The chairman's nodding your head.
I don't know the exact distance. I'm not sure. If Mr. Conley might have an estimate?
Question?
Distance to the transit?
Quarter-mile radius of the transit station?
Yeah, I do not know if it's a quarter mile. It's a few blocks from the transit center.
It's about two blocks away.
Yeah, but Vista's blocks aren't uniform, so that doesn't.
It's less than a quarter.
Here's my concern. If you're within the quarter mile of the transit station, people will tend to walk to the transit station and use it. And so I'm willing to go along with all the mixed-use standards. If you're farther than a quarter of a mile, we have found that people tend not to walk to the transit station and will rely on their cars. And our parking standards are based on people using the transit stations. So if you're not within that quarter mile, you're going to need more parking, in my opinion. So that's why I'm.
I can get you that stacked one in like two seconds, but it's within the quarter mile, because my parents own a business on that corner.
All right, then I will consider transit-oriented. So, thank you.
Student Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments?
I have a question about the possibility of perhaps adding a storefront on the corner of East Connecticut and South Santa Fe.
Can you get him closer to the mic? I can't pick you up.
On adding a storefront on the corner of South Santa Fe and East Connecticut, I'm not sure how that would work with the basement. But as a mixed-use zone, I think it would add a lot to the project, because there's no amenities there. And yeah, I'm just curious as to if that's possible.
Throw it out there. Thank you.
Not at the moment.
Okay. Let's see. Commissioner Looney?
Just a couple of comments. On the ground-level site plan, we have a 15% slope shown on access to the underground parking. On the first-floor site plan, we have a 20% slope shown on that ramp. So there is going to be, if you go with a 15 or 20% slope, you're going to have different distances. You're also going to have to have a transition ramp between the level area and.
Yeah, it's going to be 15%. It was just a typo. We were thinking 20, but then we worked it out to be 15%. So it's going to be a 15, oh, well.
Okay.
Yeah, 15% slope.
Okay. And then, as Mr. Rossler said, again, concerned about parking ratios, depending upon the distance from the transit station. distance from the transit station. Did you want us to comment on architectural style?
Sure.
You had mentioned in your presentation that the architectural style was being more of a transitional appearance and theme, which is good. It's a very, it's a style that's being used a lot today. Looking at that west elevation, I would have you consider modifying the arched-topped windows.
Okay.
It seems to go contrary to your transitional style.
Yeah.
And I think you'd end up with a lot stronger design by doing something different with those arches. I mean, you could still integrate that arched-top window. I think the radius just needs to be modified if you keep them.
Okay.
Just something to consider. And then those, again, relate back down to the parking area as well.
If I may quickly respond to the Commissioner Rossler's question on the distance, it looks like it's .4 miles to the transit station.
Sorry, I was doing the same thing you were, but it looks like, walking, you can cross the street and go right down. I think if you're driving, it takes into account a little bit longer of a thing, so it's within the .25, give or take.
Is that you, John? Okay. Okay. That's okay. Commissioner Garretson, comments, questions?
Yes, since you, your parents own a business in this area, you're aware of the amenities that are across the street and also up where the schools are.
Yes.
The city is now working on the possibility of opening up those basketball courts there, which would really help out the people living in this apartment. So right now, it's closed off to the general public, but the school is looking at the possibility of putting an outside gate on Santa Fe in order to provide public access after school, and the city park ranger would open and close that, so it would have access anytime the schools, including weekends, weren't in session. So that would be a big plus.
That's great.
You know, for people living in that area, not to mention access to both skate parks and the transit center, not to mention the Lenoir Road Center. So from that respect, you're really in an ideal location for people to have access, since you don't really have a lot of space there for amenities.
That is true. I had to work to get the common area and be creative with the, you know, the third-floor patio area, but yeah, that'll be great.
Commissioner Looney?
This is for staff. What kind of landscape coverages are required for the size of property and the proposed
I believe from memory, it's a 15% coverage. Is it 10?
It's 10.
10.
Ms. Ramon, I have a question for you. Are these apartments intended to be market value or lower income?
Market value.
Market value. So you haven't, you're building apartments, but you're gonna use the condo, you're trying, attempting to use the condo standards?
It's still, yeah, well, the floor plans and everything are per condo standard, so in case the owner in the future, between now and the end of the design decides he wants to go the condo route, we can go the condo route.
Okay, and there is an elevator?
Yes, there is. There is two emergency stairs and an elevator.
And, pardon me, the garage you said will be secure, so it will be much like the one that's on the corner where there'd be...
Exactly.
Okay, perfect.
Yes. That's one of the issues when I was considering design is security, and, you know, by putting the garages on the lower level and not having people walk by and see somebody's living room, that was a big thing for me, so that's why we decided to do a covered garage.
And when the other complex came before us, what we did, and I think you've got the common thing, is that there's an alley behind, is we requested extra lighting back there, again, for the protection of the residents. Commissioner Looney?
The layout is refreshing. The way that you've isolated the bedrooms, for the most part, you've kept the noise from adjacent units.
Yes.
I think, well, it's very creative design, and the site design was well-done, too.
Commissioner Rossler?
I agree with Commissioner Looney. I think it's a unique design. I have a problem, though, with, I like the parking on the ground floor with the, using the alley, that's a great idea. I'm a little concerned, though, about the first-floor wall on North Santa Fe where the parking garage is. I know you've done the archways there with the landscape vines. I'm not sure that, I don't know what else you would do, but I'm not really excited about what, about this, so...
Of the facade on the garage level?
Yes, yeah. And then on both the north and the east, south elevations, pretty blank walls that are visible, so I need, I think you need to pay a bit more attention there. And the only other comment, I know you're probably struggling with the height limit, but the three architectural elements that go above the flat roof line, I think it would be helpful if they were higher to provide more relief. So those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I was about to, my comment is regarding this front face where the brick is shown with the, with the archways. I'm just not quite sold on it, and I don't know if that's because I'm expecting some more landscape area in between the street and the building, and we don't really have that. We have the, we have the, these are vines on the archways, or those are...
I had another idea by creating, after I had submitted this, within the archways to create, 'cause I need ventilation through the garages, so I was thinking of creating like, there, like little, there'll be like squares and cuts, and so it'll be like kind of artwork, but you can see through, but it's also secure, that nobody can break into there, and it'll be like a design feature underneath the arches. So that was another design I was thinking about behind maybe the vines.
Yeah, I think it's worth taking another look and see what other ideas you can come up with there. As, to me, I'm worried that those arch elements with the vines aren't going to be plush enough, and they're just gonna be dead. Dead, there's not gonna be a lot of soil there to support it, and I'm feeling like that is gonna end up with a more massive brick look, that I'm not crazy about that much brick in the scheme of it, but I think it...
Yeah, the brick is, was an idea to bring texture in, because a lot of what I've been seeing is they've been missing the texture and just using the stucco and the color, so I wanted to bring something different in, but if I can probably minimize the brick...
Yeah, well, it's just one person's opinion, but it's feeling, because that's, that first level of brick is 10 feet, is, we're at 10 feet high there. So, yeah, at the pedestrian level, it's gonna feel a little harsh, I think.
Yeah.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
Just want to confirm, there's a washer/dryer in every unit?
Yes.
And every unit has a patio?
Each, each unit has, let me get the exact, each unit has about 143-square-foot balcony, so it's about 10 by 10 patio, and each unit has a washer and dryer.
Thank you.
And each floor has storage for all of the...
Yes, so each floor is provided with, there is about six, eight storage lockers on each floor, which actually is more than what's required, and so each floor has its own designated locker space.
Okay. Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. Another question on this picture that you have on the screen, Connecticut Street, South Elevation, that appears to be really the west elevation. So that's just a typo on that, but...
Oh, yes, sorry.
On that elevation, one of the things that, as was previously mentioned, on those arches, if they remain, the distance that you have at the top of the arch relative to the top of that building material, if you could get a little bit more mass, that would help. And then I think, I don't see this as brick, I see it more as concrete block?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, yeah, concrete.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was, that was all, just minor comments, but...
Okay, commissioners, one last take. Any more questions or comments, or Commissioner Bell?
Thank you. I'll just jump in and say, I like the, your willingness to build this direction on Santa Fe, or Vista Way?
Santa Fe.
Santa Fe, sorry. I live here, too. But I think, I think that this direction on this street will become more walkable as places like this are built, and I think it will improve the smaller businesses in the area. I hope it doesn't, change happens and things get, businesses move and change, but I see this as a positive thing for the area, not as overtaking what's there, and I hope it improves the area, and it seems like you have that intent with the design and with your, your direction so far, so I do appreciate that.
Student Commissioner Cranford, do you have any comments now, or are you good? You're good, okay. Ms. Ramon, did you get from us what you came for?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Winters, are you good?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for everybody's feedback.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming. All right, next on our agenda is Commission staff discussion, council action, and reports. Is that you, Mr. Conley?
I'll start you off. We held a discussion at the planning, at the city council on January 10th on the mixed-use zone to continue the discussion that we started with the planning commission. I believe it was back in November. We presented the recommendations from the commission for the parking landscaping setback standards. The item was continued to the 24th, so we'll be continuing to discuss it next week. They asked the staff to bring back some specific recommendations and options for dealing with some of the concerns, and so we'll be presenting all of that on the 24th and continuing the discussion, and so I'll report back to you hopefully at the next meeting with what their final direction was and what our timeframe is to make those changes. We also, the council also approved the Vista Grande annexation for 14 lots there that came to you as well, and Vista Melrose, right? Thank you, Michael. The 47 condominium development that's behind the Burger King off of Buena Vista and South Melrose, so that project got their final approval as well.
Any new leases in town, or?
None that I'm aware of. I did mention to the chairman before the meeting that the planning commission dinner with the council is coming up on February 15th, so mark your calendars. I am gonna try to get the economic development director to attend that, to give you all an update of what's happening around the downtown. There's a lot of moving parts that I'm not keeping totally abreast of, so hopefully Kevin Ham can come and share some of that information with you, or we can give you a summary if you can't attend.
Perfect. All right. Comments from, Assistant City Attorney? Good?
I have one question. Concerning the warmlands behind the Burger King, did they address the lack of a sidewalk from the apartments to the two streets?
Yes, all of the conditions that the commission recommended in their action were adopted by the council as well, so they will be looking into that sidewalk issue as part of the construction design.
Thank you.
I also want to mention, we will have a meeting again, February 7th, I believe, is our next meeting, our next scheduled meeting, and we do have a couple of items that we'll be bringing on that date, so that's our next time to meet.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else? If not, come on up.
Just about the function of the commission, do we ever review, do we ever review plans for commercial businesses, or are we only residential?
That's an excellent question. Yes, we do. We review plans for commercial development. Most of them require site development plans, and when it's new commercial, we do review them. We've had a bit of an onslaught of residential, which I'm sure you've seen, but we, the commercial projects that come in would go through the exact same process. They wouldn't have early design review, but they would have to go through a public hearing process, so anything that comes through while you're a student commissioner, you'll see is commercial as well, but this commission serves to review those projects, just that we haven't had very many of them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.